B8, Zen Garden. Staff, come on up.
Good evening, Commissioners. Heather Chaffin with Planning and Zoning Department. We're discussing case C14 2017 0148, Zen Garden. It was formerly filed as Eightfold. The name has changed. Requesting a zoning from LIMP to LI PDA NP. It's for 109 acres, more or less. The applicant is requesting to change this to a PDA which would allow a 50 percent parking and loading area reduction. Building B to have a height no greater than 160 feet. Other buildings east of Semiconductor Drive shall be no greater than 120 feet. For the portion of the property bounded by Ed Bluestein Boulevard, Technisch Center Drive, Semiconductor Drive, and Central Avenue, those buildings shall not exceed 400 feet of height. For the remaining portion of the site that's west of Semiconductor Drive, buildings shall not exceed 280 feet of height. There is an Exhibit B that shows what these different areas are. Staff supports of this list, we support conditions one, two, and three, but we do not support four or five. So, we do not support increasing height to 400 feet for that one area and 280 feet for the other. So, staff's recommendation is supporting the parking reduction, Building B at 160 feet of height, and then other buildings to not exceed 120 feet of height. This property is the former Motorola campus. This is about half of it, about 109.65 of a 228-acre mixed industrial area, previously freescale in Motorola for many, many years. Currently, there are some tenants, but it's primarily unoccupied. The applicant is proposing to do a mixed-use, multi-tenant, commercial, and office development. A PDA allows the property to modify some conditions. It's not like a PUD which is much more in-depth and requires superiority items. Again, as I said on the front, and it's a little bit easier to go with Exhibit B, they're asking for 400 feet on Area 1 of height, 280 feet of height on Area 2, 120 feet on Area 3, except for Building B to reach 160 feet. When this was originally filed, the applicant was asking for 400 feet over the whole site. Along the way, they modified the request in April to not ask for as much height. Again, the former Motorola campus, there are currently some limited industrial and office uses. There's an NXP chip fabrication facility, BAE aerospace engineering, APD offices, and others. North of the property are CSNP and LIMP properties that are mostly undeveloped, but there is a metal fabrication shop as well. There are also properties to the north zoned LRNP and SF2NP that have daycare and single-family residential. Immediately east of the property is the Walnut Creek Green Belt which is zoned PNP. Also east of the property is the rail right-of-way line for the proposed or the planned Capital Metro Green Line. South of the property is more land is zoned LIMP that was also previously part of the Motorola campus with a mix of limited industrial and office uses. Also south is some undeveloped LIMP land as well as SF2NP land that is developed with single-family residences. Across Ed Bluestein to the west is a mix of commercial and limited industrial uses zoned CSNP and LIMP. The property contains a creek with floodplain and buffer areas, and this is Walnut Creek Suburban Watershed which means commercial development is subject to the suburban watershed standards, which is 80% or 90% with transfers. There are both public and private restrictive covenants on this property. There is a private RC that prevents or prohibits residential land use on all three platted lots of the original development, and appears that was intended because it was an industrial site at the time to keep residential away from hazardous materials at that time. There were other land uses prohibited ranging from adult-oriented businesses to recycling facility, and that's the private RC. The public RC sets a setback of 25 feet from Ed Bluestein and 100 feet from the south and west property lines adjacent to residential, and those RCs are attached. This is in the controlled land use area for the airport, but we did have the aviation department look at it to see if a 400-foot building height would be a problem with ABIA flights, and they said it does not appear to interfere in additional. It would be, of course, reviewed again at time of site development when engineering and more technical drawings are available. As I said, this has been Motorola and various other tenants over the years since the '70s. It was begun with D industrial zoning, later changed to LI zoning, later to LIMP with the neighborhood plan. There's been a series of site plans and corrections through the years, and since the early 2000s, the property has been underutilized with few tenants. It's not currently identified as an employment center in Imagine Austin, but since Imagine Austin is an evolving document, it is possible that this may meet the terms of a job center if amended. For example, when Colony Park was created, the Imagine Austin plan was amended to reflect that change. So, it's not something that limits necessarily. It reflects where jobs may be located. It meets the definition of a job center by saying that these job centers accommodate businesses that are not well-suited for residential or environmentally sensitive areas. Job centers include office, parks, manufacturing, warehouse, logistics, other businesses with similar demands and operating characteristics. While many of these centers are currently best served by car, Red Concept Map offers transportation choices such as light rail and best rapid transit to increase commuter options. I believe the applicant has more information about additional commuter options for this site beyond what's provided by 183, Red Bluestein. As I said, a PDA is not a PUD. It's a combining district that can modify the base district to change conditional uses. It cannot change compatibility standards, but it can change the site development regulations of the base district, and height is one of those requirements. Off-street parking and loading, sign regulations, landscaping, or screen regulations in the base district. Staff is supporting the request in part. We support the idea of Building B being permitted to reach 160 feet in height with other buildings on the property being limited to 120 feet of height. This could allow revitalization of a campus that once housed major employer and would provide perhaps a mix of uses. By increasing the building height and reducing parking requirements, the property could provide compact campus without requiring a sea of parking and provide services and employment opportunities for residential areas nearby. That's all for now. I'm available for questions, and I know the applicant is here to speak.
Okay, thank you. So, I've got a few cards in support. I have the primary speaker on behalf of the applicant, Terry Arian. Come on up. You'll have five minutes.
Good evening. My name is Terry Arian. I'm here representing the applicant Zen Garden in the partnership. And first of all, I want to thank Heather and Julie Harden, who've been working with them for a long time. I think we got our money's worth out of them over the last couple of years, but we're grateful for their support. And, you know, just to kind of clarify, the PDA, we're not asking for a change in zoning. We're not asking for increased density. We're not asking for increased impervious cover. We're just asking to vary two site development regulations that are applicable in the LI zoning district, and that is height, which is now limited to 60 feet, and the parking. Because we think we're going to be primarily a job center, there'll be some mixed use, some restaurants and other amenities, but we're not trying to be a domain. We don't think we're going to need the density of parking that some of these places have. Right now, there's a lot of surface parking on the property. We hope to, you know, eliminate some of that. And, you know, we're blessed with having the Waller Creek hike and bike trail right behind the property and the Green Line which hopefully will get off the ground at some point in time. I'm going to go through a couple of these slides real quickly, and then Adams Arashani, who is the managing partner of the partnership, will take it from there. First, these are just concept drawings of the five buildings that we are proposing to put on the, let's see, how do I do this?
Press to the right.
Press to the right, okay. Okay. This is overview, sight view of the property. You see where it says NXP? That's the north, 78, 79 acres of what was the Motorola campus. The subject 109 acres is kind of shaded in blue, and then Hewlett-Packard is down there in the lower 39 acres. This gives you an idea of where it is in relationship to downtown UT, Lady Burke Lake. Here's actually a better map. It shows, you know, the distance to the airport, which is about six and a half miles. With 183 South is complete, it'll be 10-minute drive to the airport. It shows you where downtown is, about four and a half miles away, and Mueller's 4.2 miles away. This is a site plan of the property, and you can see the boundaries of the 109 acres outlined in red. We're blessed with most of the foliage that's on the campus. The green buildings in the middle that are designated by letters FHJ, BCD, L&amp;M, those are existing buildings. Most of them are low-profile squat, brick-and-concrete industrial buildings. FHJ right now is under renovation as four-story office buildings. I've got a picture of that I'll show you in a minute. The only area where we're not in agreement with staff's recommendation is on the two sites you see up on the front where you have Buildings 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5. Buildings 1, 2, and 3 are proposed buildings. That's on about a 10-acre site, fronting right on the road. That's where we're requesting the 400-foot of height. Buildings 4 and 5, which straddle a large detention pond that CTRMA is building right now to handle the runoff from the new road improvement, you know, that's where we're asking for the 280 feet of height. Again, this is the request on the left to modify the height and reduce the parking. The table on the right shows you what is allowed in the LI zone district, 80% impervious cover, 1:1 FAR, 4.7 billion square feet of site of development. We're not asking for any increase in those requirements. This, I'll wrap it up real quick. This is FHJ. It's an aerial shot. Those were originally 25,000-square-foot footprints, two-story. There, as you can see, now they're four-story. They'll be completed later this year. There'll be about 375,000 square feet of Class A office. There's a picture there of what it'll look like when finished, and you can see the, one of the trails that winds around between the existing buildings.
So, final thoughts, Terry?
Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right. Next up, I have Adams Arashani, and you have time donated by Fati? Rajabani? Is Rajabani here? Okay. Is that you? Okay. Perfect. So, you'll have six minutes.
Good evening. I also want to thank the city staff. I know they've been there several times, and I've been bugging them for at least two years now, and we're finally here. Thank you. I wanted to talk to you about the economics, the condition of the property, and a little bit about the history of it. The property for the past 12 years has been abandoned, and it's changed hands multiple times, but is primarily being used as a salvage operations where the assets were just basically torn apart and sold off. When we acquired the property, we decided to do something that was going to be different. As NXP is winding down and HB has sublet, they're planning to exit out of that part of town, and we thought this would be a very good time to do something unique and different, and we just happened to luck out, not by design, that 183 project began, and it happened. This 12-lane highway is going to bring in quite a bit of access and mobility, and it will push, we think that it will push the companies that do not want to be downtown to east side of town. It will bring in employment and other opportunities. This side of town has no restaurants, grocery stores. There's really not much left. We office there currently, and we're faced with that ourselves right now. And we did a, is this the one?
Might be the other one.
Which slide do you want?
I want to go to the video. Oh, you're using the, using the wrong one. Okay. I want to go to FH, okay. We got this from Texas Department of Transportation. This is, with their permission, this is what they are advertising as what 183 is going to be. And we thought by promoting the development to the frontage of the property and by using the height, we could leave the greenery and the beauty of the campus intact and just refurbish the existing buildings that we have in the back. When we first started, Building FH and J were very much abandoned, and it was just a concrete block with metal panelings on it. As we speak today, this, we have added two floors to Buildings FH and J, which is now about 345,000 square feet. It's a lead candidate, and we're very sure that we're going to get either silver or gold by the time it's done. And we've also utilized in discussions with Austin Energy thermal storage units, solar energy to greatly impact our impact on the utility grid. In addition, this property enjoys a connection to south and north power centers of Austin. So, we believe that that's a very unique feature that a lot of tech companies would want to utilize, because when it was Motorola, they were an operation that was 24/7, so there was a lot of existing redundancy on the property that now can be utilized and redeployed for today's companies. And as you can see, the Green Line is right behind us, and I think that this would be one of the properties that could help justify public transportation by bringing in more population to East Austin. Capital Metro is also wanting to reactivate some of the transportation lines they had to the property once our leasing is completed and the property's been more matured and the numbers are there to justify it. We have also put in plans connecting to Waller Creek hike and bike trail, and we have developed a building conceptually right now to house artists and become a civic center for East Austin. And we're planning on having it managed by our management, but the decision-making and how it's going to be utilized by the artist community themselves. Those are very young programs, and we're in discussion with the community to make sure that it fits them, and the rents that will be charged will be very minimum, and those fees will be going back to the community and the artist community, and they will be forming their own committee and deciding how those funds are going to get dispersed. This is, this slide will show you the connection to Waller Creek and our current condition. These are the thermal storage units that you can see we have already installed. By the time the campus is fully matured, this will be the largest thermal storage unit in southwest part of the country. We currently have, I believe, 32 of them, and this will allow Buildings FH and J to completely get off the grid and not use the city, and we will cool the buildings down from three to five. And with the solar energy that are being installed on the roofs, that reduces the energy impact about, our consultants tell us 45 to 50%, but I think it's more like 30%. We also have our own chief medical officer, and we are putting in a clinic and wellness center that's been designed that we just started construction on it about a month ago, and we're going to have our own community and exercise and wellness center for the campus, which also will be available to East Austin residents.
So, final thoughts, sir? So, your time is up, so you'll have final thoughts?
I'm sorry?
I said your time is up, so just final thoughts, just to wrap it up.
Just to wrap up, I wanted to show you an overview of the property, and we have a rendering of what we would like for it to look like when it's done, once you drive into Austin from the airport. At this. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, while that's playing, I've got two other speakers. Next up is Angela Garza and then Lynn Haas. Ms. Garza, you'll have three minutes.
We are all so proud of this. I mean, can I just tell you all something positive about this? Well, a lot of things positive. This man has worked really hard, him and his wife, to bring in something so different into East Austin that we have never seen come into this. He has put his heart and soul into this, and he has also communicated a lot in lines with the community on how we plan to work hand-in-hand. We've had discussions about when these jobs come into the area, that we want the Equity Access work hand-in-hand with the Equity Access team as well, so that we create those $25, $30 jobs that plan to come in, they actually go to some of our people here as well. So, we, I was a former land use chair in the area. Adam has really just communicated, 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 communicated with us. We have voted along the ways over and over, and things have changed. We've talked with Heather. We've tried to get the insight on everything here, what they're asking for. They're working even with nature. They're not trying to destroy the nature. There's deer there. It's actually completely getting, completely beautified. I remember Commissioner Jeffrey, I think he joined us one night, over there, and we did, we've done a couple of tours there, and it's just, if you haven't had a chance to get out there, no one thought that this area, this ugly area, would ever be this beautiful. Really, no one thought that. So, there is some challenges that he's still running into because of the land, the way the land is set up. Other than that, I think that when we have a developer who works this hard with us, hand-in-hand, to understand how to work with us so that we work with him, I think the best thing that we can do is support them so that they can lift off what they need to do, so that we can come in hand-in-hand and work with the other objectives that we're trying to get in our city done, especially with Equity Access. I'm so proud of this. I know, I'm proud of Adam. I mean, honestly, I have never seen something so beautiful take off and ground off with so much support, especially in the community, because it's not replacing, displacing anyone. It's actually bringing things into the area that we've needed really, really bad in that area, and I'm just glad that he has put that much heart into it. So, I'm asking, we've talked with city council, we've talked to other people, and we've gone above and beyond, just continued to communicate with everybody that, listen, this is something that we really, really want to all get behind and really think about that. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Lynn Haas, you'll have one minute. And then Terry, you can have three minutes after that if you'd like.
Good evening, Commission members. I want to thank you first of all for your time and your service to our community. I really appreciate that. My name is Lynn Haas. I work for Bike Texas. Bike Texas was founded in 1991. We are a nonprofit. We work for safety, access, and education for bicyclists and pedestrians at the local, state, and national levels. Bike Texas has come to support all five requests by Zen Garden. This includes the parking reductions and height increases. Zen Garden is bounded by two arterial bike paths. Those are the Southern Walnut Creek Trail and the new trail on 183. Zen Garden is also adjacent to the future Green Line rail. Reduced parking will encourage more people to use these existing trails and future transit. More height will provide well-located density to support the Capital Metro Green Line in East Austin. Once again, I want to thank you so much and wish you a good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Ms. Haas. Terry?
Thank you. I'd like to show you, if we go to number 18, if you can find that. I just wanted to say while we're trying to cue this one slide up, the height really is important to us because we really don't want to cover the entire property with buildings. We'd like a few distinguished buildings that identifies the job center, that, you know, this is a high-tech job center, that gives it place and presence, and it's important to the economics of the whole project to have that. And we thought this was a good place to put it because it really doesn't displace anybody. The whole, not just the 228-acre Motorola site, but BAE to the north, the old Tracor site, and property to the south of this is all zoned LI also. What I wanted to show you, was this right here? Mr. Thompson had come out to the open house that we had and was saying, you know, we're not sure where TechDOT is putting the trail heads to the Walnut Creek bikeway, but we need one in this area, and what we're proposing to do is technology. There it is. It's getting drowned out. If you see that square straight up from the star, and there's a little road that comes down and kind of dead ends, that's the MKT Railroad, that line just to the right of it, which is where our property line is, and the trail is the white line on the other side. With little cooperation from the city of Austin, we hope to put a trail head there. We'll be happy to answer any questions you have. I don't really have anything else to say.
Okay. Thank you, Terry. All right, Commissioners, those are all the speakers. Is there a motion to close public hearing? Motion by Commissioner Shea, second by Commissioner Kenny. All those in favor, raise your hand. Any opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Commissioners, questions? We had four speakers and our staff. Go ahead, Commissioner Kenny.
Question for the applicant. So, we talked about increase in the heights. We can reduce the impervious cover, keep more of the site green. So, the limited industrial has 80% impervious cover. How much of that do you think you guys are going to end up using?
How much of that do we think we can reduce? We can't accurately say until we start the site planning, but it would be double digits, you know, maybe 60, 65% at most is what we're thinking.
So, I'm really inclined to support the height. I think the more we can go up, it leads to the efficiency that the owner was talking about, but also does allow us to do things like have more greenery. So, what do you think about tying the two together?
Well, we're not opposed to tying the two together, the only hesitation is we haven't gotten to the site planning stage yet, so we can't, we haven't calculated it, but...
Sure, because I see a lot of surface parking in that.
What's that?
I see a lot of surface parking.
Yeah, and we hope to get rid of a lot of that.
Right, okay. Pass.
Any other questions? Commissioner Anespolido, then Shea?
Thank you, and happy new year, everyone. I had a question, actually, I think, oh, but yes, your comment about the artist community that's been consulted and I just wanted to hear a little bit more about who that artist community is.
Well, we're thinking, we're not thinking one particular group, we're thinking that there, there are a number of products that are already in East Austin, but they're very, very expensive and limited. So our thought was that we would form a committee and they would be reaching out and form, kind of be part of the decision-making. We really have no intention of getting involved. What we would like to do is to create a fee structure so it does not become a problem and take the funds and put it back into the community and we're going to let the East Austin artist community make those decisions. And by, we're going to allow them to form the committee and decide who's going to come in, who's going to come out, but we will do a distance oversight to make sure that it does what it's supposed to do and it does not become a monopoly for any one group. We'd like to see, I personally am, my wife is into painting, but I'm trying to promote more music.
Okay, I appreciate that. So I take that to mean you don't currently have, you're not in communication with artists right now, but you have, or are you?
Well, we've had communications with some of the local, on individual basis, but not groups. And we just finished designing the building and we haven't been, until our PDA is done, we haven't been able to really do a full-blown site plan. And once we do a site plan, then we can actually locate a building for them. But we were thinking to speed it up and use one of the existing buildings as a temporary means until a new building is built. And also, we need to incorporate some of the, you know, we've been working with the neighborhood association, we want to incorporate some of the things that East Austin needs and doesn't have into it, so it doesn't become just for that and so the building could service other needs like meeting places, groups for the community as well. We now have approximately a million square feet of buildings. There are not, the only FH and J is under construction right now and we just started the wellness center in building C and the restaurant is going to be going there for the campus, but there are, there's building D and L and M that could be utilized on temporary basis for something like that. And we're, we are going to plan to start those meetings in March.
Okay, appreciate that. I just wanted to figure out who's your liaison, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Shea?
I've got a question for Mr. Arien first. So I appreciate the whole, you know, concept of, you know, going up so we could, as you talked about protecting all the green and such and as the other commissioner brought up about possibly reducing the IC, I mean, what is the current IC on the site right now?
We, we believe it's about thirty-five percent, is that where it might? About thirty-five percent. It looks like more from those, those aerial photographs because there's some rather intense impervious cover on the NXP site and down on HP, but about thirty-five percent.
Okay, and over that thirty, I guess my concern is if we have, you know, as you talk about the green, we have thirty-five percent impervious cover right now, now we're talking, looks like, you know, if we kept it as it was, you're going up to eighty percent and now we're losing the green. I mean, you know, a lot of it, you're talking about some type of environmental protections and protect, you know, preserving the green. What is, how do we guarantee that it's going to be there because you're, we're already headed to the direction of increasing the impervious cover, so how are you going to be mitigating between that, that we don't lose it? And then later on, let's say we, let's say we're all as supportive of you have in the height and you said, well, look, we, we have all this empty land, we left it green and then let's say five years down the line, eight years down the line, hey, we have all this space, let's go ahead and keep developing, we start losing more and more of that green. So I'm trying to find where that number is to be able to tie these two together to ensure that, I mean, the vision that you have continues and is preserved and truly is, is doable.
Okay. I, I, you know, it, I would, I would think we probably wouldn't add more than another twenty-five percent. If you look at buildings one, two and three on that site plan that you've got, right now it's a sea of asphalt. We're going to, if, if we get the height that we're requesting, we're going to put a massive underground parking structure there and three buildings will go up, so it won't add a whole lot on that ten-acre site. But I'll tell you what, the managing partner is right behind me, I'm going to let him answer the hard questions.
Yeah, I think that'd be great, to find a way to give it some teeth that we can really fulfill this vision that, you know, that you're, you're showing us.
Well, the property comes with four-point-seven million square feet of entitlement, so whether you go this way or you go up, you're capped by how many square feet of building you can put on it.
Right, the FAR, right?
Yes, and, so we're not changing FAR and what we really, our plan is, and it's not changing, we, we want to develop the frontage and we really are working with the buildings that we have. I don't see us adding floors to building D, for example, because that's already been permitted and it is infrastructure, it's up, so we're not really planning on making it the whole concept of Zen Gardens.
I, I appreciate, I mean, I, I see that it's what happens later and the whole idea of, so you're holding FAR, right, but you're increasing the height, so we're supposed to maintain that, you know, that small footprint, but you're keeping impervious cover at eighty percent. And so what guarantees us that, that green can even stay? Because that could be future development opportunity because that IC is there protected, I mean, you know, at eighty percent. So hence, that's why we're trying to find that way to bring, bring it down. So currently, if it's thirty percent IC and you're thinking you need another twenty percent to fulfill this vision, so we've got to give up some green at this point in order to do what the vision that you're talking about. So we're looking at possibly fifty percent IC and that's, you know, which is a reduction. So basically a trade-off to ensure it, we go from the height, you know, and we reduce the IC so we can really truly preserve that green. And would you guys be willing to, you know, work with us on that?
Well, we are willing to work with you on that, but we have not been able to do a master site plan because we don't know what we're doing, so it is, we've...
So I'm limited on time, I'm going to ask staff if there's, if there's a mechanism, real quick, because unless, unless another commissioner can take it from, from there, I'll let you finish up.
I will, if you can.
Okay. Okay, so go ahead, I mean, because I got twenty, yeah, twenty-eight seconds before I get to it.
Go ahead and ask a question, I'm sorry.
Okay. Looks like I'm about to run out of time, so if some other commissioner can continue this conversation, then I appreciate that, thanks. Assistant Staff?
I, I have a question for staff, because I too am looking for the right vehicle. I'm thinking pud to me is, they've got all these wonderful things they're talking about that they want to do and, I mean, I love the energy part of it and all the great things you're talking about and typically those kind of trade-offs get kind of enshrined in a pud, but is there a way to do that in a PDA, that we actually get some commitments for benefits as a trade-off for a height under this vehicle or should it be a different zoning designation?
We cannot require anything superior with any zoning request except for a pud. There could be additional limitations put on the property in terms of, as we were saying, a possible maximum impervious cover, maybe locations where, there are things we cannot require, as you know, most zoning categories, we can't add entitlements to the base zoning, we can only cut down from them. PDA is one of the few where we can allow extra, but we can allow extra height, we can reduce setbacks, we can't require no surface parking, for example. There's just not good ways with our, with law to work them in there.
So, so you can, we could discuss the height increase, but also an, an IC as we've been talking about here within the PDA framework? That's allowed, okay.
And as he was saying, you know, if they're going to achieve the FAR, there's, you know, either up or out and we, I'm not a site planner anymore, but the city does not encourage excess parking, so if they did go up, there would be no reason for them to continue to have the spread of parking as they have now. So if they're proposing to take advantage of the height, which is what they're intending to do from what they've said, they wouldn't be able, they wouldn't do both, but it's hard to force them to not spread out, because right now they're allowed to spread out, but not go tall.
And we can commit to not exceed seventy percent for now until we do our site plan.
Terry, are there any more questions?
Yeah. Go ahead.
Staff, do you mind putting that one picture up that had the building layout, A, B, C, D, all that fun stuff? So right now, rough, of your site roughly, what percentage of your site is, will be constituted by structures of buildings excluding parking?
When, there's not much we can do with the parking, you see the, on the FH and J, the parking lot down that is right in front of FH that encompasses HP, there's really not much we can do with that. It's going to pretty much stay that way because HP, when they divided this up, we're very limited into what we can do because HP has easement for their trucks to go through there, so I, you know, we, we have been able to put in islands and more trees, but we have restrictions that are imposed to us by our neighbors when it was subdivided. That's what we're, our concentration is really on the frontage and...
Sure, let me jump in real quick. So for one, two, three, four and five, you're envisioning structured parking for all of those, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and what is, is your site plan, everything that's here outlined in red or is your site plan smaller than that?
No, this is our conceptual site plan for where the buildings, the future buildings development would be and the parkings would be contained in that area.
Because looking at this, it looks like this is an impervious cover, maybe...
Didn't they say thirty-five?
Oh, you said thirty-five percent existing today, my colleague here says?
It is, but also there is a good portion where you see, where it shows as a lake.
Sure.
That was just taken as an easement by Tech Dot.
Right.
And so we're working with them right now in terms of water quality and we have a tentative agreement with them to put in some features for water quality because we're concerned about the quality of the water that's going to go downstream and they've agreed to do some things that will alleviate that concern. But you also have to note that when you go down about six to eight feet on the site five and four and three, you pretty much hit water. We haven't, we have to be able to do some tool testing and economics to see how far down we can go for parking and while the buildings may, may be four-hundred feet, but not the entire four-hundred feet will be, I don't think the entire four-hundred feet will be office space or misuse. I think some of the floors we may have to do above ground and the parking and the buildings may have to be ultimately incorporating to one another. And this is something that's going to come down a few years down the road, this area is really not ready to observe this kind of a development yet.
Understood, okay, thanks.
Any other questions? Commissioner Thompson?
I just had a question for staff on, if the, if the total size of the development isn't changing, I mean, if the FAR and the entitlements, they're not asking for any increase there, what, what is the objection that staff have to a four-hundred-foot building? Just philosophically?
They're, the only places that we have four-hundred-foot tall buildings in the city is downtown. We have definitely started having more buildings of greater height in other locations, but we're talking more in the two-hundred-foot range. And this would be a huge shift to go to four-hundred feet at this location. You know, it's, it's a beginning project and perhaps as it grows along, maybe then four-hundred foot might reflect the changing city, but since generally speaking, downtown is the only place you can get anything over two-hundred feet of height. We do have the ones in the South Lamar and Austin American Statesman area that are two-hundred-ish. Statesman intends to ask for something like four-hundred, but it's not in yet, so it's out of character with what we have done so far.
Well, Domain has just got a three-hundred and...
Three-hundred and thirty feet.
Three-hundred and thirty feet and they have a much higher density than we do. There's literally no green space in Domain that I know of.
Any other questions? Okay, motion? Go ahead. Commissioner Howard, go ahead.
Yes, sir. In case of item B eight, I'd like to go ahead and offer a recommendation for approval of all five conditions requested by the applicant.
Okay, is there a second?
I'd like to second, but also offer an amendment.
Okay, go ahead.
To reduce impervious cover to sixty percent.
Okay, so we're going to take that up, take that amendment up. Are there any questions? Actually, let me get a second on the amendment. Second by Commissioner Anespolido?
Can I speak to it?
Uh, yes, go ahead.
So this may be a little bit ambitious in terms of impervious cover, you have a chance to do some analysis, I realize that it's still very initial site planning, you want to come back to staff and council with maybe a different number, that's certainly an option you could avail yourselves of, but sixty percent is ambitious, but I think that in terms of the height, I fully support that and I think, you know, we're just constantly playing catch-up in the city and we need to kind of make some leaps to get ahead of things. So if we can preserve some more green space or maybe just keep some land open for future affordable housing or something like that, awesome. But I live very close to this area and one eighty-three is, it is what it is and it's massive now and this kind of building on the frontage of it would not be out of place.
Okay, questions for the motion maker?
No, all the questions.
Go ahead.
Vice Chair Kenny, would you be proposing a particular conduit? Would this be via conditional overlay or are we just stating as it's in the motion?
This would be as part of the plan development agreement, with the PDAs, we can take these entitlements and push them up or down?
Okay, any other questions for the motion maker? If not, is there any commissioner speaking against the amendment? Speaking for?
Sure.
Did you want to speak for the sixty-foot restriction?
Sixty percent. Oh, no. I'm sorry, we're just speaking on the minute.
Okay, let's take a vote on the amendment, all those in favor raise your hand. Any opposed? Okay, so any questions to the motion maker on the main amendment? Well, I'm sorry, on the main motion? If not, commissioner speaking against the main motion? Speaking for, go ahead, Commissioner Howard?
Sure, I think, given all of what the applicant spoke about, we had the community input as well and I know that the council office has been involved as well, I believe this is really an opportunity, something new, something we hadn't seen and I think this is truly an appropriate location, so I look forward to see what might come about as a result of this.
Thank you. Commissioner speaking against or neutral?
Neutral.
Neutral, go ahead, Commissioner Shaw?
Just neutral, I think we've worked out a good deal here, but I, you know, all these kind of superior items, boy, it would just be lovely if those were kind of in a planned unit development where we could really have more discussion about those and really more community involvement in making this, you know, really see what it is and get it locked down. I just hope the developer follows through with their commitments, thanks.
Okay, last commissioner speaking for? Commissioner Anderson?
I know that you guys have hit eighty percent impervious cover and that you already have an incredible amount of entitlements there. My hope would be that before you guys get to council that you can really look at this and that if you could figure out a way to do it under... and that if you could figure out a way to do it under 50%, that you could agree to do that. And I hope some ambitious council member might put that out there. I'd love it if that was what we were voting on here today, to really encourage you guys to, you know, hit your 400 feet and then do structured parking and eliminate as much of that surface parking as you possibly could, but thanks.
Okay. So those are all the commissioners speaking for and against?
Neutral.
Neutral, go ahead.
I love what these guys are doing in the sense I went out there and the, you know, the cooling towers and the solar and trying to connect to the bike path and things like that. I just think that's great. At the same time, he was just given this disconnected piece of land that already has all of these entitlements. And, you know, there's no way to get to that piece of land right now, other than driving on the freeway and taking the exit of the freeway and, well, not freeway, tollway, and getting off at that exit and, you know, maybe there'll be a connection to the bike path in the back, or maybe they'll put a green line out there sometime. But, you know, how we've developed this Austin, that it sprawls, where we're having, this is, you know, outside the urban core and it's going to be a major job center, instead of having the, you know, the jobs inside the core where they're connected and they have transit and they have roads and bikes and lots of ways to connect it. So I applaud what he's doing. I wish he didn't have such a bad position to be in.
All right. So those are all the... Neutral? Go ahead.
Yes. So I want to say, I mean, I definitely think that, you know, the city, this is a bold move for the city to go that, but I think it's really needed. You know, as we see that a lot of the, so many of our jobs are located in specific areas, which are increasing the unaffordability of the areas and giving better employment opportunities for more people in other areas, I think that's great. I think the concern I have with this, and I support the vision, is I question the vehicle as far as for how to maintain the vision and the excellence of what we're trying to achieve in what was presented. If, because it seems like this is going to be for many years to come, that how this thing evolves, and I think possibly that maybe the right vehicle could have been a PUD instead of a PDA. So that's why I'm more neutral on this at this point. I support the project, but somehow, it's just, how do we make sure this can be really achieved throughout the years that this is going to develop? So that's where I'm neutral on this one.
Okay. So that was a motion by Howard, seconded by Kenny. We already have an amendment passed to limit the impervious cover to 60%. All the commissioners haven't had a chance to speak. So let's go ahead and take a vote. All those in favor, raise your hand. Any opposed? Any abstaining? Abstaining? Okay. So that motion passes 9:01. Thank you, everyone.